It's now seven o'clock. And I'm calling to order and reconvening to open session, the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, August 12th, 2019. Jeanie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Present.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Razak?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
We're all here. Ms. Peel, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have, I think, just one board salute today, and I ask Ms. Donahue to give that.
Sure. The board salutes District 204 students who were awarded National Merit Scholarships from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation through their universities. From Niqua Valley High School, Tejay Ogali and Christopher Song, National Merit Scholarship sponsored by Vanderbilt University and Northwestern University respectively. From Obanzi Valley, Pranav Jaykumar and Sanye Maadreka received National Merit Scholarships sponsored by Purdue University and the University of Southern California respectively. Colleges select their scholarship winners from among the finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. College-sponsored awards provide between 500 and 2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. We now go to our public comment. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting, and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. We have one speaker today, and that's Karen Darling. And Karen, come on up and welcome.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Watch your step, dear, please.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So I am Karen Darling. I'm a Naperville 204 resident, obviously. I have a fifth grade student at Kendall Elementary. We have, as parents, and I'm representing many parents, but many couldn't be here this evening, have a few supporting me this evening, but we have, since 2015, worked with the district and worked with the principal in attempt to reduce class size. We have consistently, at Kendall Elementary, had challenges with larger class sizes. I would say, speaking as a parent, between second grade and third grade, we had a class size of 31 to 32 children. And with each class size, obviously comes challenges, both with behavioral, just the class size in general, going into the classroom and having the desks as small as they are, the attention that the teacher is able to give on a consistent basis with 31 and 32 children. This year, we're faced with the same challenge that we were in third grade, where we have fifth grade student size of 31 to 32 students per classroom. We are not pleased, considering that we live in a district that prides itself and totes the line that we are steps above other districts within the state. And so, as a parent, as you can imagine, that is extremely frustrating, considering that the school year hasn't even commenced yet, and we are up against 31 students in a classroom. So, fifth grade is a detrimental year to children as they are preparing for middle school. So, we are, right now, sitting here today, trying to understand, as parents, how we are in this situation, sitting with 31 children in a classroom. So, I think, you know, surrounding districts, we looked up several of the surrounding districts, and the average is in the 24 to 25 range. So, when we had the discussion with the principal, I did personally, she provided some feedback that they're working to understand how they can float children in and out of the classroom over the course of the day to reduce the size. And I think, as an easy solution, wouldn't it be more effective and efficient and productive for our students and our teachers to understand how we can smooth it out and allow the ability or provide the classroom with the ability to reduce the class size?
Thank you. Since that is our only speaker, we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We always begin with the superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, well, as you know, it's go time. On Thursday, we welcomed about 120 new teachers and staff to the district, and tomorrow, we hold our annual kindergarten preview day from 9:00 to 12:00, and again, from 1:30 to 4:00 over at Still Middle School. We encourage all of our kindergarten families to attend, stop by. There are various booths, and you can meet staff who'll be ready to answer any questions that our students and families might have about riding the bus, food service, our safe and sound program. And those of you know that there's no one more excited about coming to school than our incoming kindergarteners, so it's always fun. So, we invite the board to step in if you'd like during those, during our preview day. On Wednesday, all of our teachers report back to their individual building institute, and then on Thursday is our district-wide institute. And I always look forward to seeing everyone on Thursday, as I make my way around all three high schools where our teachers are meeting. So, I speak briefly at each high school, and we honor our staff members for their 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service to the district. And then on Monday, already, we are going to be welcoming our students back for the 2019-2020 school year. It's hard to believe that it's here already. Currently, Indian Prairie District 204 has nearly 5,000 students that are, come from low-income families, and we're beginning the school year this year with 121 homeless families. The unmet needs of these students continue to increase. A variety of our community partners have stepped up to really help our students get off to a great start this school year. The Indian Prairie Parents Council held its second annual donation drive to support our low-income students with back-to-school supplies, and I think Clayton's put up a picture for you. In less than a month, they raised over $7,500 to support our students, which included a $2,500 donation from the DuPage Credit Union. And donations of school supplies, which supported over 1,000 students in our district, were secured from 15 local businesses, churches, and community partners. And we also received support from the Indian Prairie Education Foundation for school supplies. So, it is through the generosity of our Indian Prairie Parents Council, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, DuPage Credit Union, and our community partners that we're able to ensure students have what they need to help them be successful when they start school. So, we're grateful for their contributions to support our students, and you see a little bit of the supplies. I know for a while, you couldn't even see Jeanie at her desk because there were backpacks and boxes hiding her from us, right? We couldn't find you.
That's right.
So, anyway, we really are very appreciative of the support that our community has shown for our families and students most in need. So, I'm going to move on, and we have a couple administrators on the agenda tonight. So, first, we have an Assistant Director for Student Services, Latonya Harris. And I know, unfortunately, Latonya couldn't be with us this evening, right, Christina? Latonya comes to us from the Joliet Township High School District, where she's served as the Director of Alternative Programs since 2010. Latonya's background is as a school social worker, and she's additionally served as a special education administrator and a director of specialized services in two other school districts. So, we're excited to welcome Latonya to the Indian Prairie family, and I respectfully ask you to approve Latonya Harris as Assistant Director for Student Services.
And I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve Latonya Harris as Assistant Director for Student Services.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve Latonya Harris as Assistant Director for Student Services as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome.
Welcome, Latonya. We'll have to welcome her on another, another time. And next, we have the Assistant Principal at Still Middle School, Yoshika Oden. How'd I do? Did I do okay? Okay. Yoshika comes to us from West Aurora School District, where she most recently served as an Assistant Principal. She's been a dean in West Aurora. Her teaching background is in the area of math and science, been in the Plainfield School District, and the Orleans Parish School District in Louisiana. So, that's where she originally came from, right? So, I respectfully ask for you to approve Yoshika Oden as the Assistant Principal at Still Middle School.
And I need a motion to approve Yoshika Oden as Assistant Principal at Still.
I move that the Board of Education approve Yoshika Oden as Assistant Principal at Still Middle School as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. Motion passes. Welcome.
Welcome to 204. And Kimmer will let you know when you can just kind of slide out the back, like, Kimmer.
Why, we're scintillating.
Budget talk tonight.
I need a motion. We're going to our consent agenda. The Board of Education approved consent agenda items F through M.
I make a motion that the Board approve consent agenda items F through M as presented.
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion with consent agenda? Hearing none. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are quickly moving to our action items. And I do need a motion that the Board of Education approve the student information system contract as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the student information system contract as presented.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Smeets?
Hello, Mr. Razak. Thank you. The district and technology services, over the past three months, completed a request for proposal process to replace our current student information system. I wanted to extend our thanks and appreciation to the district community, not only to our students and our families, but also to our staff and teachers, and the many, many, many staff members that were involved in our search process. Most specifically, I want to acknowledge our data team members that are here today, as well as Andrew Peterman for his work on this project, as there were many, many evenings of fun working through score sheets and the 60-some thousand data points to arrive at this, this recommendation. Tim Wilson from EduPoint is here as well, who's the recommended vendor that we'd like to bring forward to the board, and I want to thank him, as well as EduPoint team, for their support in the process as well. We recommend that the Board of Education approve the five-year SIS contract as presented to EduPoint.
Mr. Smeets gave us a pretty extensive report of approximately 80 pages. So, are there?
Eighty-eight.
I think if we had more data points.
So, are there any questions and/or comments from Mr. Smeets?
I have a question. It's not related to your selection, which it was very thorough. If someone questioned something, I'd be amazed. But, the old vendor, did we have to pay a fee now to get rid of them, or was that contractually because they're not in performance, we just get to close that out and move to the new one?
That's a great question. We actually went through a 10-month negotiation process to go through a mutual separation, so there's no penalty to the district in our early termination of the agreement.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
I just wanted to thank you, because you spent some time on the phone with me answering my geek questions as it relates to technology and coming from education technology, too. You know, thanks for going through this in such a thorough process, because I've seen so many districts not go through some of the things, you know, like base it on not only cost, which obviously is one thing that we always have to look at, but, you know, the feedback, the demonstrations, the functionality, and then all the stakeholders that you had as well. You know, I really appreciated the process in which you went through this, and I'm happy to hear that'll meet a lot of our needs that have been lacking. So, I'm excited.
That's right. Thank you.
I'm also just appreciative of the process. It was intense and extensive. Had the opportunity, actually sat in the two finalists' presentations for approximately an hour and a half. I thank the data team, because, oh my goodness, there's a lot of work to do, and that was only one small portion of it. I appreciated the fact that it was televised, and that people had an opportunity to look at those presentations. And actually, in your report, I did read almost all 88 pages. But, in your report, people commented back to you, and clearly, those people who weren't at the presentation also commented that this was our best platform, that's whatever it's called, the Synergy Educational Platform, is extensive. My guess is that it's going to take a couple of years, actually, to implement, because there's a lot of training of our parents and our teachers and how to use all this. Do you want to comment on that?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, we know that we're a large district, and we have a lot of stakeholders. We learned that well before we started our RFP process. But, we know that we need to take a phased implementation approach to this, and make sure that we're selective about the things that we roll out and in what sequence, to make sure that we're bringing everyone along for the ride. So, it's not just one specific group we're working with, it's the entire district. So, we see this right now, and again, this is based on preliminary information for us, on the implementation of this being a multi-year upwards of three years to the point where we're fully leveraging all portions of the system. Again, knowing that there's so much to it, we want to make sure people feel comfortable with using it, and we also engage our parents and other stakeholders as well.
Thank you. I liked that there was an energy and crisis management component to that. I liked there was an IEP component to that. So, it's pretty extensive. And finally, I like that Client First was there. During both presentations, they were evaluating also the presentations, and they agreed with recommendations from the, from the committee. So, I think this is well, well-fed it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions with that? Jeanie, please call the roll.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Razak?
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And now, the real work begins, right?
I know.
It's Jay time. It's almost every meeting is Jay time, but we appreciate his work. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve FY 2020 tentative budget as presented.
I make a motion that the Board approve the tentative budget for fiscal year 2020 as presented by Mr. Strang.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Strang?
Good evening, board members. This is the second to the last process in adopting our spending plan for fiscal year 2020. Last month, I provided you with a draft budget. Tonight, I'm presenting you with a tentative budget. Nothing's really changed in there, but what we actually know now that we'll receive from the state of Illinois. So, I'll go through this and highlight some of our major funds. One thing that we know now is that we're going to receive additional funds in evidence-based funding. That's something that we did not know a month ago. I'm going to go into a little more detail in our operating budget, particularly our three major funds, Fund 10, education, 20, which is operations and maintenance, and 40, which is transportation. I'll talk about some of the highlights in the fiscal year 2020 tentative non-operating budget. And then, the next board meeting, after we put this on display and make its availability known in the newspapers, we'll be coming to the Board for a budget hearing and final approval. I believe it was just early last week that the state of Illinois came out with the final calculations for evidence-based funding. And as you know, our percent of adequacy has been low. We were down at 78% initially. We received an additional $970,118 beyond what was in the draft budget last month. With those three installments of evidence-based funding money, now that we've received each of those three years, the $700,000, the $800,000, and this $970,000, you can see that we've managed to squeak up to 80% funded for total adequacy. I point that out, because, as you know, we spent a lot of work talking about spending some of that additional money on the areas that reflected in evidence-based funding, those elements that we've talked about in the past. What you have here is a bar graph of all of the counties in DuPage County and where they are with adequacy. And I've added in our Kane County and Lake County comparable districts, and they are in the green. So, you can see Indian Prairie School District is in the yellow with 80% adequacy, followed by Wheaton District 200. They are up around 87% adequacy. Next green is Batavia. They're creeping in on 90% adequacy. And then you get Elmhurst, which is at 104% adequacy. St. Charles, above 100% adequacy. Geneva, above 100% adequacy. Barrington, above 100% adequacy. And Naperville 203 is the final green one on the far right there, where they're getting close to 118% adequacy. What that means is that all of those school districts can implement all of those elements now without any additional funding from the state. The state has talked about putting additional money towards this each year for the next 10 years, and it was $350 million the first year of evidence-based funding, $350 million the second year, and this year was bumped up to $375 million. So, maybe that's where we got the extra couple hundred thousand dollars that we didn't receive year one and two. But, at that pace, it's going to take us 20 years before we get to the 100% adequacy level. And so, there's still some real inequities in the state. You can see on the far right that Butler is close to 160% adequacy. So, they could implement those elements and some. But, it's a move in the right direction, and as I've said in the past, as the state of Illinois starts to fund Tier 1 districts and more money's available to the Tier 2 districts, we're a Tier 2 district, maybe we'll start to see some accelerated revenue from the state of Illinois. But, that could take some time. All of our comparable districts are Tier 3 and Tier 4, which means that they have more local revenue than we do. So, we're still competing on uneven playing field.
So, if I may interject?
Sure.
When people come before us and say, and compare us in relation to 203, for example, with class size, with teacher salary, with fees for certain athletic programs, we can look at this chart and say, we're 80% adequately funded, and 203 is nearly 120% adequately funded. And so, they're able, they have more resources, generally, to do things a little differently than we do. That's one of the ways to compare it. Is that, is that accurate?
That is absolutely accurate. And the way that we're able to balance our budget is when 80% of your expenses are salaries and benefits, you don't pay your staff quite like districts that are funded at 118%, and you don't have as many staff members as those districts. So, that's how you get your job done.
Thank you.
Unless you want to run deficits.
Jay, there was a grant that we didn't get. Is that figured in this at all?
No.
Okay. So, our additional is actually reduced by a few hundred thousand? Isn't that what you told me?
Budget didn't include it.
Budget didn't include that. That's what I mean. So, so, the additional 970 is actually not 970, because they just eliminated. No. This was money that would have been new money?
Right.
That we would have never, it's early childhood, birth-to-three funds.
Oh, okay. All right.
So, that's a whole separate part from EBM.
So, it wasn't even included?
It wasn't even included, right.
So, with that being said, in our operating funds, which include education, operations and maintenance, transportation, IRMF, and Social Security, working cash, TORT, you can see that our total revenue for this year is $357,889,118. The only change to this sheet from the draft budget is in the education fund under state sources, and that's where the $970,118 went. And I'll go into that in a little more detail on the next page. You can see that our education fund is where our major expenses are. Those are pay for the salaries and benefits of our principals and our teachers and the folks that work with our kids from day to day. We are showing an excess in education fund of $1,009,000. It wasn't quite $1,009,000 last time, because that $970,000 wasn't in there. We're showing a deficit in operations and maintenance and transportation. And I had a board member reach out to me and ask me why that was. The truth of the matter is, is we've got excess in those funds, and it doesn't make sense to continue levy money into that, those funds, when we don't need it, when we need more money in education, where our class sizes are. So, we can run some deficits there. IRMF, working cash, and TORT all show small excesses. And then the total, which is always the one that I'm most concerned about, is our bottom line, and that's showing that if we run this budget well, we should end up with about $1,007,000 or $1,008,000 in excess for the year. That takes us to the 31.8% fund balance to revenue ratio. That's where we've been for a decade. We really don't fluctuate much from that. The state, in order for you to get your recognition, requires you to have at least 25%. Much like the other districts that are, have a higher adequacy level, they're running higher fund balances to revenue ratios. So, there could be 50% or 60% funded in those, in those ratios. And that's at a particular point in time. That's not saying that we have 31% of our revenue sitting in a bank account. That's as of July 30th, at the end of the fiscal year, and that's just four weeks after we receive one of our installments of taxes. So, that's the picture, when they take, take the picture of our finances, the state calculates that on. If you look at our low point in time, we're much smaller than that. We're probably looking at a 10% or 12% fund balance in those two weeks in May before the spring installment of taxes arrive. That $1.7 million represents about 0.48% of our budget. So, that's, that's a nice slim little margin there. If I go into it in detail, in local sources under education, we're spending, seeing a 3.5-6% increase. That includes a 3.5% increase in property values and taxes. That's not all taxes to existing homes. That's a lot of new property. We've had a lot of growth in the districts from development. So, we've had almost $60 million in new growth from property last year, and that represents almost half of the taxes that we received for, it's funding this fiscal year. We've also got another million-dollar increase in interest earned. As the economy has turned around and we invest our money, we're seeing a greater rate of return. There was a point in time during the recession when we were only seeing $50,000 to $150,000 in interest, and we were only investing out 90 in 180 days, very short. And we were only investing out 90 in 180 days, very short periods of time. So that's a much better scenario. Under state sources, as I said, between the draft budget, which was last month, and this tentative budget, we received what we're actually getting from the state of Illinois. And I told you last month that I was being pretty conservative, and I was expecting that we would receive more from the state, and we did. We received $970,118. That's our tier money. It's the third year of our tier, and I placed that into our state sources. And that money just dropped down into fund balances in the ed fund.
There's always a question with the timing of state payments. What was our history last year with both getting all the payments and any delay in payments, just generally? You don't have to say we missed October by five days, but was there delay and was there missed payments?
The year that just ended that is being audited right now, we received four of our categorical payments. We received all of our evidence-based funding money. We received four of our categorical payments, and they're worth between $2.6 and $2.8 million, depending upon what grants they're paying at what times. But we lost a fifth that was due back from the previous year. So we're in the cycle again of having lost a payment two years ago and waiting for it to make us up. If it shows up before the end of this month, we can credit it to last month. If it shows up after the 30th of this month, it'll go to next year. And in this budget, we have four payments scheduled. So we would be on the cycle that we've been on, one late and three on time. And then the next one for next year would be kicked into the fiscal year '21 cycle, if that makes sense.
But there's no guarantee that we will ever receive that payment, right?
No, there's no guarantee. There was, they, back when we were in the foundation formula, which was, well, it was four years ago we were in the foundation formula. It was like 2014, 2013. They missed a payment, and they didn't make that payment up for four years. So we were behind for, and those were, under that system, they were worth more. They were worth $4.5 million.
So last year's budget was plus or minus 2.6 because of the missed state payment?
Correct.
And so looking at this budget, we have an excess of potentially 1.7, but that's subject to payments on time and not missed.
This budget is a living document. And when grants don't come in on time, or somebody forgets to fill out the right form, I lose a night's sleep and figure out how are we going to get around it. So that, that's something that we work on all year long.
Good.
Under federal, in the education fund, you can see a 15.4% increase. That's a significant increase. It was just under, just under $10 million last year. That includes $1.5 million increase due to adjustments in E-rate, where we're going to get about $350,000 more in E-rate, Medicare, and IDA, room and board. You'll also see an adjustment in Fund 40, which is transportation. All of those grants are paid to us the following year. So as our expenses go up in one year, the grant amount that you should receive the next year should go up. So we've seen those prices increase. We've made those adjustments. And that's where that extra $1,006,000 has come showing up in the federal. The economy's better, and folks are driving trucks across country and not driving school buses. And to attract drivers, we've got to raise our minimum wage for those folks, and then that costs us more money. Well, that same thing is happening in that fund. So if we're seeing a 9% increase in our expenses one year, you're going to see that increase in grant money that you're going to receive the following year. On the expenditure side, we've got a 4.46% increase. That includes the 3.5% negotiated increase that's been a part of the contract negotiations from a couple of years ago. $2 million in additional staff, which was allocated from the evidence-based funding. And last board meeting, I talked about where some of those staff members were going. At some point in time, the state of Illinois is going to say, hey, these are the elements that you should be spending the money on. If you are, what elements? And are you having success? Because I think that's going to be a part of the reporting. So we've taken $2 million for additional staff to go towards those elements. And then there's a $400,000 increase in continuing education. And what that is, is lane changes. If Jay Strang doesn't have a master's degree, but he gets his master's degree, they move over a lane and they get, he gets an increase. And we spend, we were spending about $800,000 annually. Now we're up to about $1,002,000 because our staff members are out taking advanced courses. And we made that adjustment in salaries. That usually occurs in November when they make their first lane change.
The $2 million in additional staff, that was 17 new teachers, right?
It was, yeah, it was 17 staff members across elementary, middle school, and high school. A lot of it was in the social, emotional, at-risk areas.
Our Title I buildings, class size, Title I buildings.
So try and get the class sizes down for those students.
And the Title I buildings, which is where, we had a limited number of dollars in that. We looked at where research would tell us, we'd get the biggest bang for our buck, and that was, that is there. So focusing in on that, and then mental health. We put the positions that we have at the high, each of the high schools, that will also work with middle school in terms of a mental health coordinator.
Some of those are, those were some things that were specifically talked about during our Engage 204 process that we were able to respond to.
Absolutely. So fortunately for us, our Engage 204 process really came out on the evidence-based funding piece, too. Those were the, some of the things that, you know, the state, in terms of looking at what they would like to see evidence-based dollars spent on, correlated really nicely with what our community had indicated were their priorities. Now, we obviously, as you've probably heard, weren't able to do everything. But $2 million doesn't go that far in this large of a budget. But hopefully, you know, we'll look next year, as long as we keep feeling like that evidence-based, those dollars are stable, you know, make another recommendation about what our next step in, you know, in spending those dollars will be.
And it really appears that the administration took a serious look at where we feel we can have the largest impact educationally and academically. And so you made those decisions where you, where the administration saw that the largest impact could, could be made.
Moving on, employee benefits. We saw a 6.3% increase in this budget over last fiscal year. And I had a board member reach out to me and ask me, you know, if that was significant or not. We have a consultant that we've worked with for a dozen years, and he's actually met with some of you board members in past years to talk about ways that we've managed our health plan. We have a health insurance committee that a number of folks sit on, including Mr. Gamboa over here, that have done phenomenal work at looking at how can we provide a robust plan and also find savings. And the trend in the Cowal Counties is an 8% trend in medical and a 12% trend in RX prescriptions. And we're not going to see any increase in RX prescriptions because some of the things that came out of the insurance committee a couple of years ago, and that we took to negotiations and we realized would save our plan. So a 6.3% increase is really not a very big one. I'll tell you that I also kept it a little higher because we're adding some additional staff. And we got to see, you know, how many folks come on from that plan. We're consistently trying to get folks to consider the narrow network in either the PPO or in the high deductible health plan, and all of those save us money. And for younger staff members, the high deductible health plan, either the narrow network, because they don't have kids that are away from college, or the high deductible health plan where they can really take that money and manage it themselves is a great resource. And we're, we're seeing people choose that at a higher rate than we predicted. So that's been very successful. Let me go back to that quickly. So that's the $1.9 million, and that's, that's the excess in the education fund. That grew from the draft budget, and that's because we put the evidence-based funding money that we just were notified of early last week in the ed fund. On the operating side, you can see a 3.65% increase from the previous year in local sources. And that's just money that we levy into that. We can make the choice to levy more money into operations and maintenance, or less money into operations and maintenance. I made the choice last December, and I'll make the recommendation to the board again that we don't levy everything that we need into operations and maintenance, and we spend down some of the fund balance in the operations and maintenance fund. We're seeing $28,347 increased to line to negotiated contracts because we are wall-to-wall. We have the same, administrators have the same increases in benefits. And as the teachers, as the classified folks, so that was budgeted for. We're seeing a $12,000 increase in insurance to the 6.3% trend. $299,000 increased to line to the Consumer Price Index. So if our levy allows us to increase taxes by the Consumer Price Index, and if that's 2%, then you can expect that our carpet cleaner and our Windex and our other things that we spend our money on, paper in the school districts is going to go up by 2%, so you've got to add that increase into your expenditures as well. So that's what that represents. You can see in supplies and materials, $133,000 increase, really pretty insignificant in supplies and materials. And you see a slight decrease in capital outlay. That's $6.4 million. That's still more than twice of what we were spending during the Great Recession. There was a point in time when we were averaging $3 or $3.5 million in operations and maintenance. And that was a long period of time, almost a decade, and our buildings were starting to pay the price. We've been able to put more money towards capital outlay, our roofs, our infrastructure. And, and that's a slight decrease, but we've also got some money in Fund 60 where we're going to be spending on our buildings as well. I've talked to Mr. DePaul, and he's had an incredibly busy summer, and I think he's going to have another busy summer next year. On the transportation side, we've got a 4.35% increase from the prior fiscal year in local sources. And we've got a 26% increase from prior year adjusted for transportation grants. That's what I told you earlier, is that as our transportation expenses go up, those expenditures, we're going to receive part of that money back, not all of it, but part of that money back the next year. So we've adjusted for that in transportation. We are in the fifth of a five-year contract with First Student. So we have the opportunity to try and negotiate an extension or go out and bid a new five-year contract. And we are seeing numbers that are pretty crazy. We're seeing 30% increases in contract costs because it's just difficult to find drivers in this economy. So we'll keep you posted on, on how this plays out. But we're going to be doing that this fall and communicating with the board. So we're ahead of it early enough that if we need to go out to bid, we'll be able to go out to bid in January for next fiscal year. Total projected revenue is a 14.63% increase from the prior fiscal year. Salaries, that's our staff. That's not the First Student staff. You can see a $15,000 increase, a $12,000 increase in employee benefits to the 6.3%. And then when you look at purchased services, which is our First Student contract, and it drops down to the total projected expenditures, it's about a 9.9% increase over last fiscal year. And that's what we negotiated a year ago, was a 9.9% increase, which was better than we would have done if we'd gone out. Our comparable districts that went out to bid were showing 20% increases. So better than the average bear. We are again showing a slight deficit in transportation, but that's nothing to worry about when you've got the fund balances like that. The fiscal year 2020 tentative budget non-operating funds, this is our debt services. That's what pays for our, that's the loan on our buildings. We levy about $28 million every December, and we make two payments during the course of the calendar year towards our paying off our bonds in our buildings. And in 2027, we'll be finished paying off our bonds. And I've said it a million times, and I might even come back from retirement and watch that board meeting, that that's the point in time where this district's going to have some opportunities to do some things. And that's pretty much what West Aurora did, is they finally paid off their bonds a couple of years ago. And they went out to the community and said, look, we're dropping, we're dropping the tax rate by 10%. Can we have 4% back? And they got it back, not on the bonds, but on the operating side. And that's when you can hire staff and get a lot of really neat stuff done in the classrooms. But we're just, just a little outside that window. On the capital projects side, that's the side where we got money for our buildings. It's just like Fund 20 in capital projects. But in the capital projects and the non-operating funds, you can spend that money over the course of multiple fiscal years. We don't have to try and get it all done during the summer months. It's, and it's not just the summer months, but we've got to get it done before June 30th. And if you think of our construction season, it starts right after classes end, and we've got to get it done just before the kids come back. So it's real difficult. You have to pay out, depending upon where the substantial completion of that work is. So you've got to balance when you're, you're doing your projects with your budget that I paid 40% of it in fiscal year 19, and 60% of that project's going to be paid in fiscal year 20. In the non-operating, you don't have to do that. When you combine both of those, you can see that, well, let me point out, in capital projects and expenditures, you can see $3 million. So we've budgeted, on top of that, $6.4 million, an additional $3 million to go towards work on our schools throughout the district, which is almost exactly what we did in fiscal year 19. So this is, this is a big change from the days of $3 million, $3.5 million. And one of the big topics that came out of Engage 204 was our backlog of work, our, throughout the district. And it was a real concern that we were really falling behind and had so much deferred maintenance we may never be able to pick up. Well, we're starting to, starting to put a dent in some of that deferred maintenance.
And our consultant asked, told us approximately, how much should we be spending per year a couple of years ago?
Yeah, when they did their analysis, they went through and they looked at all of our units, all of our walls, all of our boilers, all of our systems, and they looked at the projected lifespan of those and said, here's when this piece of equipment should die. And then they tallied them all up. Some years were $6 million, some years were $14 million. But when you average them out, it was $8.5 million.
But we were spending $3 or $4 million.
Three and three and a half million.
For a long period of time.
Right. And that's really how, that was, when the recession hit and we needed to balance our budget, that was the first place that we went. And the first time the state decided that they weren't going to make, you know, into the budget, you had all approved a budget, and they would say, we're not going to give you a categorical. We're going to change, you know, we're not going to give you 100% of funding. We're going to give you 90% of funding. We immediately stopped, reduced our capital projects. We'd say, okay, we're going to take, you're not going to get $3 million, you're going to get $2 million. That's how we balanced our budget.
Thank you.
So the next steps, once the board approves this tentative budget, we will place an advertisement in the newspapers that it's available for display, we'll put it on display. And then at the September 23rd board meeting, we'll have a budget hearing, and you'll approve the final budget. The one piece that's going to be kind of happening, coinciding with this, is that the governor's put together a property tax relief task force. All of the unit school districts, the comparable districts are paying attention to this. A lot of the organizations that we work with are paying attention to this. I believe it's October 25th. There's a, going to be a full-day workshop on what this is going to mean. Two things that could really put the hurt on this district is something that does not allow us to access our taxes and something that shifts pensions to the school districts. So this is a big thing that we've got to pay attention to. And this is something that has always been out there, and this is a new form of how are we going to tackle this. So you'll probably receive a lot of memos and a few presentations from me regarding that effort. The audit is going on now. Audit looks great. We'll be presenting that to you in early winter, hopefully before winter break. And we absolutely expect to receive recognition, the highest of the four ratings for fiscal year 19. With that, I'll take questions, board members?
Mr. Asim?
Just two quick questions. Because I don't remember this happening a lot in the past. The, the increase in the federal revenue, you kind of had touched on it a little bit. But I guess my question- but I guess my question there is, was this something that we additionally qualified for, or was this additional money that federal government put into this fund and more districts received a, I guess, a bigger percentage?
Now, the expenses are going up, and honestly, last year, our expenses have gone up for two consecutive years, and I didn't budget for expected revenue to increase for two years. So I made an adjustment this year that really is a two-year adjustment.
Okay.
So if, if we negotiate a contract with First Student, it's a seven percent increase in, in, in transportation for this fiscal year, we're going to pay seven percent more, we're going to receive a seven percent increase on our transportation grant the next year, and I've got to make sure that I remember to do that.
Okay, well, that was actually going to go to my next question on the transportation part, but you're saying that is the way also the federal worked? Or did I say transportation the first time?
No.
Okay, so that's the same thing, the way the transportation, okay. So we didn't receive more money just because the state put in whatever it was, twenty-five, thirty-five extra million into transportation?
We received more money from evidence-based funding because they put more money towards evidence-based funding.
For transportation? Okay, well, okay, all right. That's all I have. Thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Krubus?
Page eight, can you speak towards the land sale proceeds?
Just goofed up my presentation, give me a second. Down at the bottom, you can see under capital projects, three million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we've got budgeted in there as other financing sources. Over the last couple of years, the Board of Education has made the decision to appraise and look at selling some of the surplus land in the district. And we had two parcels, really. We had Country Lakes, which was the original, one of our first elementary, original elementary building sites. It was at the very bottom of Country Lakes Golf Course, where now Atwater subdivision is. Over in the Longwood Hill area, we sold that in two installments. The other was to sell, look at selling the twenty-five acres that was originally purchased from the Brock Brody Estate. And we purchased that, I think, for six and a half million dollars a decade or so ago with the intention of building a school on it. And then the recession came along, and it was a difficult time for it. And then we had some developments starting to occur, and we thought maybe it was a good time. So we went out, followed a very specific process, and were able to sell that money for, that property for more than we had paid for it. And we, we structured it so that it would be in two takes, the developer who wanted it, wanted to buy it in two takes over two years. So they, they made their first purchase of three million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year ago. They were, they weren't due to make this purchase until December, but their building's so well, things are going so quickly that they wanted to do it earlier. So they actually did that last month. So we've closed on that property. We no longer own the eleven acres by Country Lakes, and we no longer own the twenty-five acres that was right over here off of Commons. That was dropped into there, that those funds can only be used for building construction. So we're going to use those funds to get asphalt taken care of, tuck pointing done, roofs replaced.
But that's a one-off item. That's three point five, obviously, it's in the non-operating side of our budget, but that's three point five that, it's only happening this year.
That's correct. That's correct. The only other funds that go into this is if we have any excess in our funds, if we run a better budget, and we've got a million dollars over, we can by resolution move money into that. Or we can look at the impact of developers. So when, when a home is built at Wagner Farms, depending upon if it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom home, we don't see taxes from that home for about eighteen months. So the developer pays us a fee to cover those kids because those kids come into our school, and it's about eighteen months later that we receive taxes from that property. The more the bedrooms, the more likely the more kids, the more kids, the more they should pay us. So that's kind of how the generation tables pay out. So when they decide that it's going to be thirty homes, and half of them are going to be three-bedroom, and half of them are going to be four-bedroom, pretty specific formula, you click it in, the city agrees to it, the developer agrees to it, and then when they take out the final plat, they, they pay you for that, and you get the money when the homes come in.
Where do the impact fees show up in our budget?
It's under local sources, it's eight hundred and eight thousand dollars.
And do those, I know we've covered it before, do the impact fees, do our generation tables accurately reflect the revenue from the generation tables from the city?
Not at all.
Approximately, how much is the difference?
Four times less. The generation tables that the city's using are fifteen years old. The study was done quite a long time ago. I think the, the recession changed it, you know, folks are living differently, their, families are more comfortable living in multifamily units. So what we're seeing in our developments, both in Aurora and in Naperville, is that the generation tables say you should get two kids out of that development, we can get seven or eight kids out of that development. And I've done a lot of work with Aurora and with Naperville, and they both recognize that. And so if you look at, you know, I took twenty, I sat down with both cities, and I said, "Okay, here's twenty developments. This is what the generation table said we should be getting." We've, we've got a, we've got a student, pretty robust student information system, it's not going to be as beautiful as what Mr. Schmeets is purchasing, but I can get what I want out of it. And you can, I can call up the neighborhood, and I can say, "Okay, here's what we're actually receiving from kids, and here's what grade levels we're receiving those kids." And if you adjust those ratios, we're between three and four percent, three or four times off. And so if you look at those, I took the, then I took, the next thing I did is I took the lowest outliers and the highest outliers and said, "Okay, let's look at these." And I did this with both cities, and I said, "Let's now look at it." We lost about seven million dollars in revenue from those developments.
Just last year?
It was, it was not, developments that were taking place over several years, but just those developments. It had those, had the generation tables been accurate, we would, I would have budgeted, you know, three and a half million dollars in here.
So the impact fees were designed to bridge the gap between when the assessed value changes as a result of the development to when the student's come in?
Right. The tax cycle's pretty slow.
Right. And so we're not getting, we're not, it's not, it's not satisfying the need that it was designed for.
Not, no, not at all.
And if you-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have you asked the city of its interest in trying to change the fee structure?
I've talked to staff in both cities, they recognize it, they've talked about the process of changing that fee structure. They would be willing to work with us. It would be the Board of Education and the city councils agreeing that this makes sense and changing it. I can tell you that a little kind of roundabout way is, is when developers come in and they say, "You know, I want to put up a two-hundred-unit townhome." And, and some of the developers that I've got great relationships with because they've been around a while, and I've been around a long time, and I sit with their attorneys, I said, "Let's sit at my computer, let's look at the generation tables, let's look what we're actually getting, let's look at the data that I collected that I just spoke about." And they've agreed outside of both cities' ordinances to pay us what we're actually receiving. Now, that's one-offs. And the difficult thing with that is, is that you've got to keep a scorecard so that, you know, whoever's next in, in line, you're making sure you're getting what you're supposed to be getting from that developer.
Well, and isn't it the case where recently that went into the approval or not approval by this board of a recent developer that said, "I'm not going to pay that higher number of generation table, I only want to pay what was the official." So that was one factor that weighed into our board decision about not approving a recent development.
You're absolutely right. Some develop, we've had occasions where some developers have said, "I understand that, I'll pay it." Others have said, "Absolutely not, I'm not going to pay it." The difficulty is on the north side of the district. If our operating expenditure per student is twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and a four-bedroom, single-family detached house is paying seven thousand five hundred dollars in impact fees, and it's pulling out four kids, well, you're not getting the twelve thousand five hundred dollars that you need for one of those students, let alone for, you know, all of those, the ten grand for all of those kids. So that's a struggle. But then it's on the north end of the district, and you're overcrowded, and you've got to figure out that either you're going to do boundary changes, you're going to bus those folks to the central or southern part of the district, which doesn't seem right to those kids. But in addition to, you know, kids having a forty-five-minute ride down to Kendall or Welch or Bilti even further where there's some space, that's, it's, it's not right for kids, and it's, it's just, it's not cost-effective.
On the, your conversations with the city staff, there has, they have shown some willingness on the Naperville side, for sure, to look at those generation tables, but they want an expert study, correct?
Yes.
On our dime?
They said, "I'm pretty expert," but they want more experts. They want independent-
So that is something we're at least looking at, what that potential cost might be, and whether our demographer that has worked with us previously and already has a lot of that data could potentially help us with that.
So do they, so, you know, based on the historical, what happens historically, what, what's ascertained, but then what results, they, that value of what actually, the numbers that actually result, they, they don't value that as they're looking at going forward? They won't value what, they're not valuing what, you know, you share as we go, as they go forward?
I think both sta, both staffs from Naperville and Aurora look at that and go, "Yeah, that's, those are the numbers, you can't argue with those numbers." But they believe that the city councils want to see somebody from, you know, an independent eye outside of the cities and us to say, "Yeah, those are the numbers."
The only entity that's really going to move this issue is a school district that maybe is at eighty percent adequately funded-
Yes.
-and is so motivated to adjust the impact fees to reflect reality. So that's on us. I think we need to look at this issue and advocate for it. I think it's within the realm of reason to say the impact fees were designed for a purpose, and for whatever reason, demographically, it's changed where it's not reflecting the current reality. And there should be considerations for changing the impact fees. There's ways to do it, to make it politically feasible and still promote economic development. Nobody wants to be a hindrance to that. So there's, there's a ways to make it a win-win.
I think you're, I think you're right, and I, and I think it's incumbent upon us for the constituents that, you know, we represent, and to ensure that we do that. But, and we certainly do not want to hamper development. We want development, you know, in there, but we've got to have the right information.
Would it behoove, just out of curiosity, and this is a total hypothetical question, I understand where the cities want an independent study, we would probably ask the same thing as a board. However, that could also work to their disadvantage, right? Because with all the projected development that could be happening in our area, it might be better to take our numbers now, wouldn't it? Or could it? Or do you think they would still request that study?
I think that they-
And hoping that there'll be a slight decline in, in population and that type of thing.
Yeah, I think, I think they're going to want that study, there's a couple of things that are playing into it. And we're, we've still got some parcels to grow, right?
Yeah.
We're getting kind of landlocked, you know, our biggest parcels are sold off and being developed, but we've got little pieces other places, and there's redevelopment. And I think to be able to really have this done for the redevelopment, and particularly if Aurora's talking about redeveloping and having a lot of homes, residential homes associated with that, we should get this done. The thing that I didn't say is, is that if they're off by four, three and a half, four percent, they're really off with townhomes. And we don't receive the money in townhomes and apartments like we do in single-family detached homes. I can tell you, because I just looked at this for a former board member who must be building a house, that the impact fee on a four-bedroom, single-family detached home is seventy-five hundred dollars. But a townhome, which is, you know, large townhomes, a three-bedroom townhome, we only get twenty-five hundred dollars. And if you're getting three kids out of there, you're not getting, coming close. You're paying for about three months' worth of education.
Well, and that's the trend we've been seeing the last eight to ten years is, is, and that's why the developers, I think, are looking to build medium and high density in our area because their impact fees are, are less expensive.
And I think there's a huge market for those homes, they get filled up.
Oh, yeah. Well, because the property tax payer is getting smarter, too, you can move into a great district.
A lot of those developments, the townhomes, were not developed for families. There's not green space, there's not playgrounds, there's not parks, in some cases, there's not sidewalks. It's, you know, you walk to your, you're down, out into the parking lot, into your car. And I've had both cities say to me that they've, they know they've got so many kids in some of those, that the neighbors, those communities are saying, "Hey, can you, why, how come we don't have a playground for these kids?" And, and they're like, "Well, it was never designed for kids," but now there's kids there. So they're kind of struggling with it.
Other questions? Do we have a motion in a second to approve the tentative budget? Jeanne, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Razak?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Krubus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Streen, for your detailed report. We now move to the discussion portion of our agenda. We begin with the school wellness update.
Good evening, everyone. Ron Johnson and I are happy to be here tonight to talk with you about the school wellness policy and to provide you with some information. The title is "What the Community Needs to Know." So tonight's presentation, we will talk to you about Board Policy Six Fifty, about schools participating in the National School Lunch Program and/or the School Breakfast Program are required to develop a local school wellness policy that promotes the health of students. The board already has a policy in this, already has Policy Six Fifty, and it has been approved, so there's no action required by the board tonight. We just want to provide you with some further information about that, what the compliance pieces are within that policy, and then talk to you a little bit about the Wellness Committee because we'll be back again in November to present the triannual report, which is required from that policy.
Hey, so having healthy choices at our schools help keep our children healthy and ready to learn. We recognize that our student wellness and proper nutrition are, help our students' physical and social emotional well-being, their growth, development, readiness to learn. And what our policy does, is it helps our schools create and maintain an action plan for nutrition and physical activity at our schools. Kathy and I have worked with ISBE and attended some webinars and in-person sessions related to the wellness policy and what that should look like. And the guidance that they, they give us is it breaks it down into four components. Nutrition education, how that's built into our curriculum, nutrition promotion, how do we promote nutrition and healthy choices for our, for our students, physical activity, and the last we'll talk about is our Wellness Committee and what that comprises of and what the roles and responsibilities are.
Nutrition education is provided in a variety ways. It gives students the knowledge and the skills and confidence to make healthy choices and life choices for themselves. It's provided within mainly our science and our health education programs in accordance with our curriculum. And I think it's important to note, we talked a lot about this on our Wellness Committee, that we provide the information and the skills to students, but we don't police their choices. We recognize that families have different decision-making processes and can provide for themselves, but we do provide the educational background for the students to understand how foods work together, how they can help to be healthy and work together to create safe and healthy students. So we, we do recognize that. And so we teach, and we model, and we encourage, and the materials are dis- And the materials are displayed throughout all of our cafeterias.
Okay, so how do we encourage our students to make healthy nutrition choices? First starts off with what is the cost of a meal and what does that meal look like? Our, our standards have to meet USDA guidelines and published guidelines for what a meal should look like. There are five components for a lunch. There's four items. And they have to meet certain nutritional standards that are published. And we're audited on that every year. So we do self-audit and then ISBE will come out and come every three or four years and audit us as well for compliance. We support healthy school meals. And as on the first slide, we saw, as a member of NSLP, we have to meet those guidelines or can jeopardize our participation in that, in the program. Something that's coming out is we are, we launched a website so families can still access student menus, see what, what's being offered. However, they're able to see the nutrition information behind it. They can look at the sugar content, fat content, carbs, protein, et cetera, and be able to make a little bit more healthier choices for that menus item. So it's good information that's available on our website. There's no change in behavior for the families. They still access the same links. It's just now they can click on if they want to see what the grilled cheese and the nutrition facts behind that item. It's pretty, pretty neat stuff. Some of the items that we also do is at the, in the cafeterias, we place fruits and vegetables in certain areas. We also, so if you're in the serving line, it's available there. But then it's also available near the cashier. So the cashier can also be kind of like that second, second set of eyes that says, hey, you know, why don't you take a banana today? It's also making sure that we're in compliance with NSLP guidelines, that it's, that they do take a required component, which is a favorite vegetable. And then as Kathy stated, we, we put posters and photos of nutritious meals and items around our cafeteria. So if you were to walk around, you'd see, you know, green broccoli and, and nice oranges and bananas. You'd see items like that to kind of make, make it a little bit more attractive.
So one of the components of the wellness policy is to promote an active lifestyle. So we want kids to have the opportunity to be physically active at school. We provide age-appropriate activities throughout their day, whether it be through outdoor or indoor recess, before, after-school programs, visual, physical education and health classes, intramurals and clubs, or sports and athletics. We do, are compliant with every student having physical education every day throughout their schooling, unless there are exemptions as well.
So when we get to the commit, the committee, the committee is, is formed for the purpose of involving the community, involving our parents, and not only just the parents, but just, you know, there's businesses and medical field professionals as well, to give us advice on providing health and wellness to our students. We are an advisory committee. It is not a, a committee that, that formed to be authoritative. So we're not dictating or telling schools that they should or need to be doing these things. They may have an idea that they want to run a pass, a committee that involves many stakeholder groups in our committee, in our community. And we bounce it off each other and talk about it and give feedback to our schools. Many of our members, especially in our community, have nutrition backgrounds, whether it's in the medical field or in the food service or nutrition dietary field. So we've involved parents from our schools in that as well. And it just, it basically gives advice, helps us implement the wellness policy on nutrition education, the promotion, physical activity, and also gives ideas on what schools can do as well to kind of promote fitness, health and wellness. What does our committee look like? We have about 30 total members. It includes district administrators, building administrators, our menu planner and nutritionalist with Organic Life, our district management team from Organic Life, parents and guardians, our physical education teachers and our health education teachers. And during our first meeting, what we did is we reviewed the document that ISBE put out for us related to the wellness policy and what we should be doing as a school district and implementing it. We also talked about what should our committee role be, as I talked about on the last slide. And we wanted to say, what is our mission? What should we, what should we come up with? So this is the mission statement that our committee of the 30 that we just spoke about now came up with. And it's to promote student wellness, including good nutrition, physical activity in the district, educational programs, school-based activities and meal programs through the collaborative efforts of the classroom, school, district and community.
So our next steps are we'll be meeting with our Wellness Committee and working with our buildings. And we'll return to you in November to give you the tri-annual report. In that, there'll be an assessment of our implementation of the policy, looking at the compliance within that policy, how we compare to other local school districts and their policies, description of the progress we've made, as well as some of the results of the assessments, how we'll make those available to the public and how we'll keep the records of those assessments as well. So if you'd like to find the wellness policy, this is the, the link to it on our website. And then go to the school board, to the policy manual, and you can find it under 650. With that being said, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
Ms. Peel?
Your physical education and your physical activity. I thought it was important to point out that there's many, many times when a student's can get physically active during the school days, not just during gym class.
Exactly, exactly. There are recess opportunities. A lot of our teachers do movement breaks. There's before-school, after-school. There's a variety of opportunities to not only provide time for activity, but to provide them an outlet for interest that they may have. So they may be a particular sport that they'd like to investigate or something like that, too.
And the other question I had was, we have a very diverse community with very different tastes and foods, based on their ethnicity, their culture. So when we're having a, a committee look at this, do we have that voice at the table? I guess that equity lens at the table about the diversity in our interests of our kids, even regarding activities? I mean, there's going to be differences.
So if you recall, last year during my food service presentation, we talked about the comprehensive survey that we gave to our community parents and students and the feedback that we received and the potential direction to go towards more site-based meals, based on the feedback that we received in those surveys. The online system for menus that I was just talking about breaks it out by site. So it's a step in that right direction, using the information that we received from that comprehensive survey to incorporate into our menu planning by site.
Wow, great.
Ms. Demming?
Along the lines of physical activity, I know that our state, there were some considerations and concerns about physical activity throughout our school system. And just wondered if you could just share a little bit of how our schools compare as a result of national guidelines regarding physical activity for our students.
Well, our, there were some, at the elementary level, our students have PE class three times a week. Laura Johnston did some work with some PE teachers along with Brian Jovanini and provided teachers with movement break ideas for ways that throughout the day, even on days that they don't have PE, of ways they could provide students an opportunity to be more active and to take a break that way. We do have recess as well, but that's an unstructured time. Then at the middle school and the high school, PE is something that students have every day unless they have opted for a health class or blended PE option, where they still have PE every day. It's just not in the structure of a classroom. And those are well within the compliance of the minutes that are provided.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Grover?
For the physical education in the elementary and middle schools, is it the same things that the kids are learning at the schools? Or does it just depend on the PE teacher?
No, there's a curriculum that's provided that are, that's been written with our PE teachers as part of that committee to write that. In fact, our elementary PE teachers have just revised some of their units to update them a little bit. But it is a sequential program, just as our reading program is a sequential program, building off from one skill to the next, from, all the way from kindergarten, all the way through to some lifestyle things at the high school level.
So like if they, in elementary school, like they learn dodgeball and I know my kid plays soccer and things like that.
They don't do dodgeball.
Or they don't do dodgeball. Things like that. So thinking about, are you, how do, how do courses come about is what I'm trying to figure out. How do you add other PE activities, like, or units, right? How do you, how does it come about?
Well, a lot of it comes from our PE teachers themselves. They're very active in the national organization, as well as the state organization for PE, and extend themselves to conferences and things like that to always have upgraded and updated ideas for, for their students to participate in. And they want the students to be as active as possible and as interested as possible. And they have a goal for the students to be able to learn things for their lifetime so that they'll be active for their, the rest of their lives. So they have a, a big voice in what those units are and what that curriculum looks like. There are some standards that are applied to that as well. But how they deliver the standards is something that they collaborate and work together on to make some good choices about how to get students interested and give them the content they need. But it's just like everything else. If a student isn't interested or we haven't motivated them to do it, they learn the skill and then it's gone. So they spend a lot of time working together, collaborating and updating what's available. I think a lot of our PE teachers are on Twitter. So you can see some different things being even brought up just now. Some PE teachers are really excited about something they've got ready to go for the school year. So, okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Krub?
Yeah, you mentioned something about an audit. State Board of Education, maybe auditing, I forget the specifics, but our nutrition. I was reading a report today about the states. They're having a school board meeting. And there was a number of deficiencies in their ability to audit. For example, they haven't reviewed 282 school construction grant applications going back to 2003.
We have one of those.
Exactly. So I was wondering, do they actually come to our district and audit? Or when was the last time?
So fortunately, they are on task with auditing the NSLP sites because it is a USDA requirement. So the, the funding comes through the USDA, filtered through ISBE as the governing body of that, of those funds and those claims down to the school districts. So this will be my third school year. Mr. Keely went through one during his last year, so three years ago. And they usually do it every three to four years. So we're up for one next year or this coming school year. Every year, we are also required to do what's called site audits, internal self-audit, where we do every site for breakfast and lunch, audited based on food handling, sanitation and nutrition requirements that, that we're required to adhere to through the NSLP.
Thank you.
So yes, they are on task with that.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing. Thank you so much. We now move to three short reports. The first one is a superintendent search report, which we added an agenda item since we are in the midst of a superintendent search. Dr. Sullivan will be leaving us at the end of the school year. As you know, and as you find out very quickly, the most important job of a Board of Education is to hire a leader and a visionary in order to lead the district. So we're in that process. We met with Ray and Associates in July. And we had the opportunity to map out a schedule of activities that will hopefully end in us hiring a superintendent. We hope by winter break. And our next step, the board was very emphatic of, we don't want to do this by ourselves. That it's important that we include our constituency groups in order to assist us in hiring the superintendent. So dates have been set for Wednesday, August 28th and Thursday, August 29th, to meet with a variety of constituency groups that hopefully will develop the characteristics of a superintendent in 204, to identify the needs as they currently exist in District 204, and hopefully to come up with a superintendent profile that will assist the Board in education as we start to vet and interview candidates. The board did identify constituency groups. And those groups that Ray and Associates will be meeting with will be student groups from each one of our high schools, parent leadership groups, which include groups like IPPC, PDAC. I don't want to leave everybody out. And I shouldn't have started that. But all, all our parent leadership groups, our principals, our cabinet, our associations, our teachers, our non-bargaining group and the general public.
Did you share that with us or no?
It just came out.
Oh.
And, and it's now posted on E-News. And I will make sure that that.
I just wasn't, I wasn't sure if I missed it.
Sure. There will be two open forums. One on Wednesday, August 28th from 7:00 to 8:15 p.m. And another on Thursday, August 29th from 8:45 to 9:30 a.m., which we invite our parents, community members, and community members without children in the district. They're clearly invited to assist us. So want you to be aware of that. In addition, we thought that we wanted to get as many people as possible. And there will be a survey that will be open to the public that if they can attend, that they can participate in filling out a survey. That information will be on 204 E-News. It was posted this afternoon. So we're getting ready to roll. But I do want to make sure that everyone understands that we want their participation in terms of our process. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Legislative report. As Jay spoke to, there is a property tax relief task force. They met today. I just talked to Dr. Sullivan about that just recently, minutes ago, actually. They met today. They identified eight co-chairs already, six subcommittees.
Nothing's impossible until a task force is formed.
Yep. They're going to talk about school funding, so we're going to have to keep our eye on some of this. The good part is, as Mr. Strang mentioned, that the Alliance members and other big advocacy groups are monitoring these committees pretty stringently. They were there today, just checking out the work of the group because it could have a possible effect on how school districts operate. So we'll be following that. And as Dr. Sullivan sent us a lend update, I'm sure there'll be more lend updates as that task force progresses. You have anything else to add to that?
No, other than, I think I shared at one board meeting that Senator Bettina Tarrant is having a education roundtable. So I should, on August 29th, she's invited superintendents and other folks to come and talk to her about what's next after evidence-based funding. So the September meeting, I should have a report on that meeting.
Any other comments?
I have a question about the August 20th City Council.
Mike?
About the August 20th City Council meeting, or is the board planning to go to that? I think they're going to discuss City Gate.
Oh, that's a, that is an intergovernmental dinner in which.
The City Council meeting in Naperville.
Oh, no, no.
To speak to the, about the City Gate. Are we planning or?
We gave them a letter.
We have, in the past, a long time ago, there was a board member who was very active at going to the City Council and talking to them about different developments.
Well, we have just recently, too.
Well, I meant in Naperville, too. So it's probably not a bad idea, because it was effective.
I think they want to hear from us. I think it'd be good to be more than a letter, even if you get up and just hit the points of the letter. I think there's value in doing that. I think it's, provides another forum to get the message out, that we want to try to move the needle on it.
Especially if we want them to start looking at those tables that.
So, should I coordinate that with Dr. Sullivan, Mr. Strang, and see if we have a representative to go at that meeting? That's a good question. I guess the answer to that is yes.
Yeah, I support that.
Thank you. Good question. Thank you, Ms. Grover. Anything else? Board update. On behalf of the Board of Education, summer goes by quickly, doesn't it? Welcome back. Welcome back to all our principals, and welcome back to all our teachers who will be coming Wednesday. Welcome back to our students. Let's, on behalf of the school board, we wish everyone a successful and great school I was able to give a not-too-short speech to the new teachers.
Can't do shorts.
I can't do short speeches.
Give us ten minutes, and the both of us, and he takes fifteen. Not quite, but it was great.
But one of the things that I commented on, I do want to say.
Are we going to hear the speech?
No.
Was it recorded?
Yeah.
You need to invite us next time so we can laugh in the back.
It was, I stole the speech, part of it, from the student who gave the graduation speak, speech from Niqua Valley at the graduation. And the comment that stood out to me is, together we are better. And that's what I think about this beginning of school year. It's, it's a joint effort. It's board, it's central office, it's administrators, it's our classified staff, it's our lunch moms, it's our custodians that make this district a good place to be. And I just hope for a great school year. I won't give you the whole fifteen minutes.
Our lunch people. Our lunch persons.
Lunch people.
That doesn't sound better.
Well, lunch persons.
And finally, the Board of Education will be holding a public hearing on August twenty-eighth at five o'clock in the forum room at the Burkett Freshmen Center. The purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment on the proposed e-learning program, otherwise known as No More Snow Days. If approved, will permit students instruction to be received electronically, why not physically present on emergency days. So if people are interested in participating, I wanted to make sure that they were aware that the hearing is on the twenty-eighth, and it's in a different location, and please join us, help make that decision. With that, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?